And it's a lot.
You, your name, your name.
It's allowed by zone. They would have foot rodent. No, 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 no. I'm your neighbor, you can ask me these questions if you. Because you've already been asked by a bunch of other neighbors.
That was the last thing I've ever heard.
I don't know anything about it. I don't know anything about that. Yeah.
Hazel, thank you very much.
That was in the city.
I'd like to call the meeting to order, and I'd like to start with a pledge allegiance to the flag.
Aye. Yes, please. Any, any. To the flag of the United States of America. Into the Republic of Richard Stan. One nation, one God, individual liberty is the flag off. Going off on your.
No, thank you very much. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Noon, Counselor Galanese.
Here.
Counselor Burrow.
Here.
Counselor Peeler.
Here.
Counselor Regan.
Here.
Counselor Camera.
Here.
Counselor Salamendra. Counselor Brim.
Here.
Mayor Valentino.
Here.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is a public hearing for the application to the New York State Office of Empire State Development for round seven of the Restore New York Communities Initiative Funding. Do we have anybody that would like to speak for the public hearing? All the public hearing closed. Uh, we do not have a supervisor update tonight, we will have one next month. Next is our D R up, D R I update by our.
Your clerk.
Thank you, Mayor and City Councilors, and good evening. On behalf of the D P W Barton and La Judas in Nardozie Construction, we want to please wish all residents, business owners, and visitors a happy and healthy new year. For work completed to date as of Wednesday, December twenty eighth, twenty twenty two, the contractor has completed eighty eight percent of the proposed work. The current pay estimate number fifteen dated December twentieth, twenty twenty two, shows completed work to date was eight point nine million out of ten point two million. Roots five and twenty traffic signal upgrades and the Bezuto rainwater collection system installation are progressing. Granite paver accents have been installed. The contractor has submitted requests for substantial completion acceptance, pay quantity discrepancy review, and contract extensions of time, which are all being investigated. Substantial completion will be granted when all traffic signal work has been installed and accepted. Upcoming work schedule for contract one, the five and twenty corridor continues to be in phase one C. Work zone traffic control will continue until all proposed traffic signal work can be properly installed. Contract two, the streetscape in five points continues to be in phase two C. Work is not yet completed on all traffic signal upgrades. There are concerns under the Bezuto, they have rain collection structure is not completed. For electrical, the subcontractor, contractor, traffic signal material and equipment delays continue. And for the budget, they anticipate that all final completed contractor work to come in right at or just under the original base bid of ten point two million to approximately nine point eight. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next is consideration of meeting minutes, and it's the December seventh, and the only one who was absent was Counselor Noon, I need a motion. Counselor Regan, seconded by Counselor Peeler. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Regan.
Aye.
Counselor Camera.
Aye.
Counselor Brim.
Aye.
Counselor Noon. Counselor Gal, Galanese.
Aye.
Counselor Burrow.
Aye.
Counselor Peeler.
Aye.
Mayor Valentino.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next is public comment, and I have one person, Andrew Spink, who would like to speak. I don't see Andrew.
He emailed it earlier.
Yeah, if Andrew comes in, we'll allow him to speak towards the end.
Okay.
Okay. Um, next on the agenda is our city manager report.
All right, good evening. Uh, so as far as city managers report, uh, this evening, I do want to start off with an announcement from our comptroller. Uh, the comptroller's office is aware of a technical issue that occurred when preparing the twenty twenty three tax bills. So if you reviewed your tax bills, you'll notice that there is an error with the date and a couple other items within that. We're working with our software company to correct the situation, and we'll be sending out corrected bills to everyone in the coming week. Um. As a result, we are going to pause accepting payments on the current bill. Uh, and we will provide a brief extension to the January thirty first deadline to allow residents time to make that initial payment without any penalty. We do thank everyone for their patience with this. Um, it is an error between our files and the files that go into preparing these bills. So we want to make sure that people still receive the correct bill, are able to pay it in a timely fashion, and that correction will come, we're hoping by the end of this week.
So, quick question, my taxes are handled by my lender, like, like many people, if not most. So, people who get tax bills are owners of their properties outright. What, is the discrepancy just a day or is it a, a dollar amount as well?
There's some, there's some errors within the dollar amount as well. So there was a formatting error within the tax prep. So, they will be updating all of the banks, there has been notifications going out, and at this point, no payments will be accepted on them. So, we found that and have stopped the payments on those bills.
Okay, follow up, is it gonna go down or up?
Counselor, counselor, easy, I know.
I think that's.
Expected to go up.
I think expected to go up, and if it goes down, be happy. All right, well, there must be a, which, which weighted way this is the mistake leaned, right?
Yes, it, there was a, a formula error, and so.
Okay.
It will likely go, actually, I don't know which way it's gonna go.
Fair enough.
I was gonna say, it depends on the bill.
Counselor Regan and then Counselor Burrow.
Uh, I'm just curious, have you accepted some payments and what will happen?
Uh.
Of those who have already paid.
Very few payments have been accepted. What will happen is we'll reach out to those that have been accepted. And edit their payments.
Yeah.
Accordingly.
Thank goodness for Geneva and being the slow payers.
Counselor Burrow.
So what is the due date, and when will the revised, uh, bills be?
I don't know the answer to that right now. This, this is going through a process this evening, actually, they're still working.
January thirty first is the first installment due date.
Yes.
May thirty first is the second installment due date.
Okay, so then, so the due dates are accurate on the, on the bills, my, my bill was accurate.
Well, your bill says January thirty first, twenty twenty two. And so, um, there's some inaccuracies, there will be.
That's just, that's just typographical, the, 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 the real issue is not the typo, the real issue is the amount.
Right, so.
So it's the same due date.
The due date may change.
It's one thirty one, yeah.
Yes, the first due date, not the May date.
I get it.
But the first one to accommodate that there's gonna be a different time.
Yosa.
I'm all set with that one, I'm gonna continue with the updates, if that's okay.
Thank you, sorry, we said taxes and it just set off a whole bunch of like.
And I wanted to get that out, we'll be communicating that through all of our different channels and making sure that people are well aware. Um, and we'll also be printing them on a color of paper, so it's very clear that when you receive whatever color paper, not green because that's school taxes, but that is the accurate bill. So, thank you for your patience on that to all the community members. Uh, just a couple of quick updates, staffing, um, back to the comptroller's office, they are welcoming a new finance clerk too on January twenty third. Uh, I'm not going to announce that person as they still are going to be letting their, their, uh, current employer know that they'll be joining our team. Uh, at the same time, that office will be reorganizing and welcoming the senior account clerk who was previously housed in the Human Resources Office. Um, who is responsible for payroll, uh, and bringing that back into the comptroller's office, that was a change that occurred a while ago. We're also going to begin the search for the Deputy Director of Human Resources, and so you can see how that vacancy there, um, allows us to move that forward. That was a piece of something that we had done during the budget seizure, season, to allow for succession planning as well as having two confidential employees within that department. Uh, the search for Director of Planning and Economic Development, as well as a senior clerk within the Planning and Economic Development Department, will commence within the next company, or in the next month or so. An internal and external panel participants will be coming together in late January, early February, to talk about that position. Uh, the Director of Econ, Planning and Economic Development position. Uh, we also, as I already noted, will be searching for that Deputy Director of Human Resources, we're going to be working with the county to ensure that the title, uh, is, is what we would like it to be, as well as what the position description is. So those are a few staffing updates on that as well. We'll be doing slightly more construction on the first floor as we bring, uh, the senior account clerk down to the first floor as part of that finance team. So there'll be some, some changes there as well in the coming weeks. Another update is on the Marina. Um, we have received correspondence from the Army Corps of Engineers that will allow us to seek permitting to carry out the work related to the docking system and the Marina. These are the permits which would allow the city to begin the process to implement the Marina as proposed in the D R I submittal, which was previously approved by council. Um, what that entails is starting to look at the next steps, this is not the final approval, we'd still have to go through the NEPA process as well as other processes. Go out to bid, find out what the cost would be, and then have that discussion here with council about how we would pay for that Marina. This does include the plan though that was submitted with the D R I with that location. If we were to change the location, change the scope of the Marina, that would start the entire review process again. I already know, there's questions, yeah.
So do you know about how long that's gonna be until the bid process, and you, and we don't have an engineer's estimate?
Of, not a current engineer's estimate on it. Um, the bid process will be able to put out once the NEPA process is complete. So we still don't have the approval to actually move ahead. We've just jumped through another hoop, um, which is the Army Corps of Engineer approval and D A C approval, to seek the permit. But we need to go through the federal NEPA process, similar to like a secret process. Um, so that's the next step, once we have that, we'll be meeting more with the consultants to see what the timeline really would be.
So, so just, I, this one, so we have. Cool from the Army Corps of Engineers to seek the permits.
Yes.
From them?
Yes.
Okay, so up until now, they didn't want to hear from.
They were reviewing all of the plans, which allows us to then go to the next step.
I see, so it's just.
And the other piece on the Marina project, I did bring our team together to talk about what that looks like, is ensuring that when we talk about the financial impact, we're talking long range financial impact, because there'll be ongoing dredging, there'll be, um, I believe there's kayak rentals, attendance costs, things like that. Making sure that we're talking about maintenance as well as operations into what that budget looks like.
And the NEPA process, what do you guys stand for?
I knew someone would ask that. Um, it's the Federal Environmental Protection Act approval process, I'm not sure exactly what the N E P A is, but.
Just for a point of clarity, so residents might be curious, the Army Corps of Engineers follow up was one of our delays.
Yes.
So it's like, this is, this was a delay that they triggered, we didn't submit anything late, that, this was a delay on their end, and they're just kind of completing that, you know, proceed, procedure.
Correct.
So I think there's probably a moderate amount of speculation on the project. What would, in your wildest dreams, estimate, uh, when we would be breaking wave to do this Marina?
My wildest.
I mean, is, is this a twenty twenty three project?
It needs to start in twenty twenty three.
Start in twenty twenty, okay.
In accordance to our grants.
Okay.
Um, our grant financing goes through, I extended it, I believe, till twenty twenty four, um, because it was the original deadline, I believe, was this year, and we extended as much as we could. So there is, there is quite a timeline on this.
Okay, there's still a lot of work to be done.
Yeah, that, that's why I'm getting that word.
Let staff come back to us.
We're, we're at the mercy of some other entities here.
Absolutely. Um, and then the last thing I do want to share with council, um, as well as the city residents, and let me make sure I have enough on each side here, um, are some twenty twenty two successes from our various departments. And so what you'll see and we'll be posting on our website and we'll be able to prepare for others is, um, department by department, one more. You're welcome. Uh, what's happening in each of the different areas? So from the city manager's office, you can find that one, we hired a new city manager, we're gonna count that as a success so far. Uh, we've.
We concur.
Um, so six months ago, that occurred. Uh, we've also communicated, uh, with over five thousand residents on a regular basis through our, our six thousand seven hundred and forty one in our social media channels and thirteen hundred through our notify me, um, something that's within that process. Uh, as we jump to the city clerk, you'll see the clerk took on a lot more responsibilities for council meetings, preparing resolutions, agenda prep, and scheduling those meeting spaces. They also scanned burial permits and indexed countless births, deaths, and marriages, so a lot of work there on the clerk, gives a flavor of what each office does. The comptroller also welcomed on a new comptroller who allowed us to complete the budget in under sixty days of her tenure. Um, other things that you'll see in here, uh, include, from our Department of Public Works, it's broken down by each division, but the Department of Public Works added staff this past year, completed restoration projects, so Carrot Hall. Came on with the D R I project management and continuing that, started with the Lake's Edge Development Project, ensuring that that's in compliance, so there's a lot in there. Also completed lead water service replacement projects, upgraded twenty service lines within that. Each depart, our, each division is broken down in the report. As for our fire department, it was a record setting year for our fire department, it's up two hundred and fourteen from the previous years, with twenty one calls credited to new EMS response since eleven one twenty two, so those are the calls. Um, we welcome the new deputy fire chief, that is a new position in twenty twenty two, who's establishing more into the prevention side of things as well as code enforcement. Uh, we also welcomed several new officers into the fire department. On I T side, we mitigated all of our email from on premises exchange to the cloud exchange three sixty five, so that migration is an important piece of kind of bringing us to the next step. We also started replacing our phone system, um, again, going into the cloud, a lot of our services are starting to go to the cloud. Planning and economic development, while the department is still being formed, a lot of these things included, you know, working with various community partners, and also looking at our farmer's market. We had roughly a twenty percent increase in vendor participation in our farmer's market, and vendors reported roughly ninety seven thousand five hundred dollars in sales for twenty twenty two. So, quite an increase there, it's a sixteen, sixteen percent increase from the previous year. The Human Resources Still Department brought on several new staff. Uh, they also worked with promotions, recruitment, and retirees. They also worked on one piece here is transitioning all of our right retirees into a new Medicare consortium, which provides some cost savings for our retirees. Doesn't necessarily reflect ongoing cost savings for us, but it does provide some cost savings. Uh, the police department worked with over four thousand four hundred hours of overtime, which was partially due to a lot of vacancies within the department. They rolled out several different programs, they provided training services to many of their officers, and they worked on recruitment and retention strategies with the unions, the city management staff, human resources due to the low staffing, uh, numbers. Those low staffing numbers were caused by some retirees, some vacancies. Um, they did bring on four new officers in twenty twenty two, with the, the last officer being sworn in actually, um, earlier this week, so he was welcomed aboard. Um, recreation, worked a lot with the community partnerships. Uh, worked in a lot of different events, such as touch a truck, worked on the Easter egg hunt with the Y partnership with the D C to have the fishing clinic, providing boating safety with, uh, partnership with the sheriff's office and many other part, uh, partnership programs. They also provided seventy one hundred public skaters, um, came into the recreation complex. And then our assessor department, assessment department, was able to maintain their high level of service as they went throughout the year. All of these, these successes were documented by each department, departments met with their staff to outline theirs, and then they provided them to me to share with all of you.
Did they, no, no failures?
We did not focus on the failures. I think we all spend a lot of time thinking about all the things that didn't happen, the challenges, and this focus was on switching that mindset too, there's a lot that was achieved.
Excellent, is this available to the public?
Yes, it'll be on our website.
Counselor Galanese.
Did this come out of your budget, this paper?
I got a question.
I put it through council.
Forty four hundred hours in overtime for the police department, do you know the dollar amount that that was?
I don't know the dollar amount off the top of my head.
Could you let us know?
I could let you know, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yosa.
I am, that's the end of my report for this evening.
Great, thank you. Next is unfinished business, we will move on to the second reading of an ordinance amending chapter three thirty five entitled Vehicles and Traffic of the Geneva Municipal Code, presented by our city manager.
All right. Uh, so this municipal code came forward at the last meeting, it will continue the work, winter parking pilot program started in twenty eighteen, which modified the way winter parking was enforced in the city. The second reading includes a chapter, uh, changed to chapter three thirty five point twenty seven C pertaining to towing fees, we discussed that last month. Um, previously, there was a, a monetary amount in there, we have changed that language to say at the cost or the expense of towing, instead of putting a monetary amount in there that changes over time.
Thank you, I need a motion. Counselor Noon, seconded by Counselor Galanese, discussion. Just for the public, um, this is, we, we mentioned the word pilot, this is not returning back to the old policy, this is implementing the new policy, and the challenge with implementing the pilot into policy was to make sure that we had enforceable actions, because there was many times that, um, tickets were brought to court and were discharged from court because it wasn't one of our ordinances. So this is a step in the right direction to be able to supply the residents in the area, um, with parking opportunities in non-snow events. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Noon, Counselor Galanese.
Aye.
Counselor Burrow.
Aye.
Counselor Peeler.
Aye.
Counselor Regan.
Aye.
Counselor Camera.
Aye.
Counselor Brim.
Aye.
Mayor Valentino.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next on our agenda is a resolution of support.
Before you go there, I have a, I have a request for the city manager. Since this is finalized now, can you put the rules and regulation on the city website?
Yes.
Like on the front page?
Yes, it can go on the front.
And would, hopefully, we don't have to put it in effect, but.
Right, yes, and we've added, uh, we've added a lot of that language, and when we did go through that winter parking event, made sure to, to push it out, but we'll continue to do that, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next is a resolution in support of the application to the Empire State Development for Restore New York Round Seven Funding, presented by our city manager.
So this is for an application for round seven funding from Restore New York Communities Initiative, uh, administered by the New York State Empire Development Program. Uh, the city will apply with the hopes of receiving this Restore New York funding to allow Pretzel Logic to move into the larger space at eighty eight Middle Street and hire thirteen to fifteen additional staff in the next five years. This is what the public hearing was held for earlier this evening, and I believe Nicola is on, um, on the Zoom if there are additional questions about Pretzel Logic and this grant program.
Okay, well, let's get a motion, it's Counselor Galanese, seconded by Counselor Noon, discussion or questions? Any?
So that. Well, go ahead. Okay, so, yeah, I'm just trying to get the highlights here, um. The, you know, to, to actually make the application of the five hundred bucks, not a big deal, but that, but the, uh, aim is to get, is to bring in approximately one point eight million dollars to support the location of this, um, company, Pretzel Logic into, in Geneva. And they're currently not here, right, they're not, they're not inside the city limits?
Yes, they are. They are, they're currently actually in the G E D C, so.
Okay, they're in the G E D C. Want to give her an opportunity to.
Yeah.
Give an overview?
Yeah, that would be great.
Can, can you give us just an overview of what you're looking for?
Um, yeah, so, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. Um, so Pretzel Logic is actually looking to expand, um, their business, and to do that, they're looking to move into, um, eighty eight Middle Streets and out of their current location, because it can't support their expansion efforts. Um, the reason that it would be one point eight million is because of the fact that they would be doing, um, a lot of construction and rehabilitation to bring that building back to life. Um, and then they're also looking at doing, um, an expansion of that building to support the expansion of the business.
Thank you, Nicola, and I think, um, you know, a lot of times the city of Geneva has been labeled as non-business friendly, I think this is just a great example, we're doing, um, the things, you know, the G E D C is supposed to be an incubator for business, that it grows, and hopefully inside the, the city of Geneva, that's the goal, and this is just one of those efforts that we're expanding upon. And the other.
I just have a quick, I just have a quick question for you, how many employees do you currently have?
Um. If I remember correctly, they had twenty, they're looking to add thirteen over the course of five years.
So there's twenty employees as of today, or you had twenty employees?
So what happened was, is because of the fact that, um. It's hard to explain, but what happened was, is they actually downsized because they, they packed up some of their equipment, um, because they've had to downsize. So what they did is they actually loaned some of their employees to another manufacturing company, and then what'll happen is, is because they didn't want to leave those employees off, they will then bring those employees back once they, um, are in the new bill.
Thank you.
And if I can help with that, Nicole, and you might correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a partner company that is inside the city of Geneva that deals with similar type of work that, uh, that loan of employees went to. Counselor Galanese.
And, um, if you're awarded this grant, how many additional employees do you look to employ?
Um, fifteen over the course of five years.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? Thank you, Nicole, clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Galanese.
Aye.
Counselor Burrow.
Aye.
Counselor Peeler.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Counselor Regan.
Aye.
Counselor Camera.
Aye.
Counselor Brim.
Aye.
Counselor Noon, Mayor Valentino.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I saw the city clerk looking at you.
I could feel it.
Next is a resolution designating Miday Mears and Ricky, L L P, as a Geneva City Attorney, presented by our city manager.
So currently, Miday Mears and Ricky has, are, provides attorney services and expertise on a number of legal, legal subjects to the city, that contract has been in place since twenty fifteen. Their proposed contract of a monthly retainer of seventy five hundred dollars a month for fifty hours of work, and an over retainer fee of a hundred and fifty dollars per hour falls within the twenty twenty three budget and has remained the same since twenty fifteen. This will allow our, their services to continue for the coming year.
I need a motion, Counselor Noon, seconded by Counselor Galanese, discussion.
Counselor Galanese, that's your hand up? I'm a hundred percent for this, I think that they represent the city well, and I'm in full support of keeping them on board. Counselor, Counselor Peeler, then Counselor Camera? Yeah.
This is a term for three years?
Um, I believe it's just an annual term.
It will be till the end of the year, and then the new council next year will do a new.
And that, okay.
Yeah, and if I can help, traditionally, at the beginning of each council term for your term, we are supposed to designate an attorney, we're supposed to designate a newspaper and a financial institution. And, um, for some reason, we, we did one that was a one-year term, so this is just kind of complete the, the sequence. Counselor Camera.
Well, I'm, I'm in support of this, I'm in support of a, a one-year cycle, I don't want to do things for longer than that. I appreciate, um, the, um, work that you, you know, your firm's done, and, um, uh, Abel and I butt heads often, and, um, I appreciate his patience, so, but at the same time, sometimes I get. Um. We have, we, we approach things a bit little differently, and, um, I have problems with some of the ways we've done things, but I, I again, support, um, us moving forward, uh, with, um, Miday Mears and Ricky, and, um, I'll support this, I think this is good, uh. These numbers are good value for the city, I appreciate that.
Anybody else before Counselor Peeler gets a second? Oh, Counselor Regan, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I, I, I would also support this, I know, I'm just curious about other systems that have been used in the past by our own city and, um, by other cities. But, and I have spoken with Amy outside of meetings, and I just thought it might be helpful if you can address your thoughts on it. I mean, Amy is the one who primarily, um, works with, with, um, the lawyers, and I think especially her being new here, um, it's really important her thoughts on this as well.
Sure, uh, so I've worked with them for the last six months, uh, many cities opt to have outside legal counsel, many cities also opt to have an. Many cities also opt to have a council member on staff. Um, this system seems to be working at this point. I met with both Steve and Mike recently to discuss how it's going. Uh, six months in, making sure that we're using the process well and wisely. And so we'll continue to do check-ins like that. Uh, if council were to look at changing this, then we would have to approach it a little differently and look at a review, potentially look at a request for proposals to see if there were other competitive bidders or to look at, would it make sense to bring in an inside staff person that represents us? I will say, when you do that, you'll still have times that you need to go for outside counsel. Much like this contract, there are many things if this firm does really well, and there are some things that other firms do better for, for what we're looking for. And so we search for outside counsel. That's always the challenge with municipal government is we touch on so many different areas. And so you need many different types of attorneys, uh, on board to help you get through some of those things.
I'll give you a round two in just a minute.
Thank you.
Counselor Noon.
I just wanted to commend and thank you for your services for the city and the professionalism and dedication that your staff consistently follows through with and always ensures that the city is within our legal limits regardless of the situation. Uh, so I always appreciate your views. Um, in particular, I know we have not been, uh, the funnest client to deal with over the last three years and have certainly kept you busy. So really thank you for your patience with us and, and your understanding and, and always representing the, the city in a professional way. Uh, and also just to commend you for continuing to keep the fees, uh, consistent for the city. And, and I'm sure they could have easily gone up and many attorneys definitely would have raised them, I'm sure significantly, especially after the last three years and, and, uh, since 2015 in general. So, so thank you for being there for us and service to the city.
Before I go to round two for Counselor Peeler and Counselor Kim, I have a comment that might help Counselor Regan. I am the old guy on, on this council and have experienced, um, multiple different levels of attorney-client relationships. And we had, uh, Clark Cannon for many years, and then we had David Lee Foster for many years. And I think the, um, it was, um, our city manager, Matt Horn, that presented this forward. And it gave us the opportunity to have the flexibility to have multiple lawyers instead of one single lawyer with a specialty. So I, I, I appreciated that representation we've had throughout the years has been very beneficial. And compared to just a single representative that we've had in-house for years, uh, we reduce costs and got, and got better representation across the board.
Okay.
Counselor Peeler.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I was kind of taken back by the response and I, I wasn't, I wasn't finished with my commentary or questions. So my question is, based on what I was originally talking about, is since our media source of record and our financial institution of record was decided on once the January that we were, uh, sworn in, why, why and how did our legal get taken out of that four-year cycle since we're clearly not voting and selecting our financial institution today and our media provider?
It, it was based on a resolution that we passed in 2021.
Yes.
There was a one-year limit.
That was a one-year limit. So we, we basically altered our four-year agreement.
Correct.
All right. So I would, I would hope to get back on that four-year agreement because I, I not only echo what Anthony said and hear, hear to all of it, but I want to be accurate, whether we want to honestly and openly admit it or not, the legal counsel we've received has been exemplary. It is lined up with all the specialists that we've brought in. All right. And it's, and it's taken us basically in a roundabout way, right back to the original consultation that we've received from our legal. That's been first class. So I just, I just hope that we acknowledge that not only is the value tremendous, but the service is exemplary. And that's a very hard matrix of things to get at the same time. And we should really think about getting that back on that four-year cycle so that we don't have to do every year.
That's for the next council.
You know, maybe. Well, I just, I just think it's, I think it would be appropriate and, and, uh, financially intelligent.
Counselor Camera.
Uh, yes. Well, I, I didn't expect to respond to what you're, you're saying, but I completely disagree. I think we should be, uh, reviewing this every year. Um, I think that, you know, you mentioned that you, you have a review with the firm. You go back and forth and you talk about those things. I think it's up to council to, uh, also be consulted and to have our experiences with, with what we see as the work that's being done. And that to be reflected in a renewal every year. You're going for four years, uh, does, is, takes the sort of the council oversight out of the process.
For the paper and for the bank too?
Counselor Peeler, please.
Order. Consistency across opinions?
Counselor Peeler, order. Like Counselor Camera, he has a floor.
And I think that the oversight, uh, by city council is the way the, the citizens are assured that, uh, um, you know, we're getting the right counsel on a regular, on an ongoing basis. Um, the one thing I wanted to ask, and that was, um, and we're going to approach this later on, was the, um, resolution about the San Meadows landfill.
Mm-hmm.
Did you, you got some certain, you got some assistance, right, from, from this firm? And, um, you know, I was given an opportunity to, to, to write the resolution initially. And I said, well, I really feel that I'd be comfortable with staff writing this one. And then I would maybe, maybe kibits afterwards. And, um, I was really impressed with the resolution and the scholarship of it. And so I, I applied, you know, you had, you had things to do with that resolution and my city manager saying that, um, I'm impressed with that work and I appreciate that.
Yes. So I will say for me, um, because I am not an attorney, that's not what I went to school for. That's not what I do, things like that. So the initial draft of the resolution is something that I created. And then I share things with, with council to say, is this, is this right? Um, and then with that resolution, which we'll talk more about, I'm sure, um, there are some pieces that was requested for us to look at. And so they were able to talk through in their team and then reach out to some other, you know, outside of their team to, to make sure that we're doing the right thing.
And I think it's a powerful voice for the city of Geneva if we can pass that resolution. Thank you for your work on it.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Noon. Counselor Galanese.
Hi.
Counselor Burrow.
Hi.
Counselor Peeler.
Hi.
Counselor Regan.
Hi.
Counselor Camera.
Hi.
Counselor Brim.
Uh.
Mayor Valentino.
Hi.
Motion carried.
Next on the agenda is new business, and I did just see Mr. Andrew Spinks come in. We did pass public comment, but I'm going to put your rate at the end of the public comment at the end. So the next is a resolution opposing the increase of the permitted landfill height and extended life of the Seneca Meadows presented by our city manager.
So as mentioned in, in Counselor Camera's comments, uh, New York State Department, DUC, um, is currently receiving public comment regarding the Seneca Meadows Inc. project. Um, as the project sponsor, Seneca Meadows, Inc. must obtain projects approvals from New York State Department of Environmental Conservation or DUC. Uh, some of those approvals include modifying the facility permit, um, changing that print, changing the approval. And they'll need approval from the town boards of Seneca Falls and Waterloo for that site plan. Uh, what this, those approvals will allow to do, allow it to do is actually increase in size, uh, as well as in duration. So it would allow fifteen years, I believe, on the current projected plan. The resolution serves as an opportunity for the city council to oppose that increase. Um, and then it also serves as a council, uh, allowing the city manager to seek interested party status. Uh, that would place the city basically on distribution list regarding the landfill and would make us an interested party, ensuring that it's clear that because the landfill is also in our neighborhood, while it may not be in our city, it does impact us.
I need a motion. Counselor Camera, second by Counselor Galanese, discussion. You see Counselor Peeler and then Counselor Regan?
So quick question, uh, what is the opportunity there to be opposed?
The opportunity to be opposed. So this would give, they're asking for public comment. So this just says that as a, as a body, your public comment is opposition. You don't want to see the landfill permits passed. You want them stalled. Uh, you don't want us to see it increase in height. You don't want to see it, um, increase in duration. So.
And that will provide us opportunities?
So that's, there's two parts. The other part would be an interested party, which is a very DUC term, um, which basically says that moving forward, when they list all of the parties that this impacts, the city of Geneva would be listed as one of those parties. So any notifications that go out, any changes, any of those kinds of things will come directly to the city.
Well, that, thank you. Will that, um, align us legally with any claims?
No.
Or provide any opportunity as far as like recompensation or?
I don't believe so.
Okay, because I'm just, I'm, all right, I'm trying to understand the language. If it's going to provide us an opportunity, I want it to be clear like how.
Right.
Counselor Regan?
Yeah, I think we'll probably hear this from others, but I, I'm really grateful for, um, this resolution for all who, who put it together. And, uh, I feel it's a really important statement for the city of Geneva to make and for all of the finger lakes really to, um, hear and echo. Uh, we, we are between two of the largest landfills in the state. And, um, you know, it just seems as though we've done our, our share. It's not just not in my backyard. It's, it's, um, we, it's already in our backyard. We don't need it there longer and higher. And it does impact us as a city. So I'm glad we have a, a chance to make a statement like this. And I hope that it's, uh, as impactful as possible and that it gets heard and has some, uh, some weight, um, in, in the, the future of, of that, um, landfill. So thank you for the work on this.
Counselor Camera.
Um, one of the things that I noticed, I, I thought it was in there before, but it might've been taken out for a reason. And that is there, it doesn't seem like, even though we're talking about the nuts and bolts of, you know, uh, the, um, and we mentioned Seneca Falls and we mentioned, you know, the other parties, town of Waterloo, who are impacted and have parts of the landfill in there, uh, within their, um, municipal boundaries. We are not, um, is, is the, is the, is the mentioning of the, uh, local law number three passed by Seneca Falls taken out for the reason that it should close in 2025? Or is it that you're in effect doing that by having all this, all this verbiage in here? But it, it doesn't say specifically, we support Seneca Falls passage of local law, law number three, which limited the permit to, to 2025. It doesn't have that anywhere, right? Is there a reason to take it out? Was it in there originally?
It was not in there.
Two different landfills, I believe, is the issue there.
No, it's not.
Yeah, Seneca Meadows. If you're saying Seneca County?
No, I'm talking about Seneca Meadows.
Yeah.
The local law number three passed by the town of Seneca Falls said that the closure date would be at the end of the 2025 permit. And that was language, I mean, I'm not, um, I mean, I just, I, I don't know whether that adds power or not, but the thing is, is that, um, they've been fighting, you know, SMI has been fighting this local law and has, and said it's, uh, what are you, what is the thing? The article seventy-eight says it's capricious. It's a governmental, it's capricious and nothing, an arbitrary. And don't, don't we deny that? It's not capricious and arbitrary there. We, we, or, or is it the reason we took this out because we can't really vouch for the process? The town of Seneca Falls went through every nut and bolt, so we just have to have our own basis for this? Okay. That sounds about, okay. And, and so we haven't taken any power. Okay. So we haven't taken any power out of this resolution that we're firmly, this firmly says we're against this landfill's expansions. And do we have, but we don't say anything about the 2025 date.
So.
That's what I mean.
The, I think what you're also, this is in response to what the DUC has put out. So this is the DUC. So that is not part of the DUC piece. That resolution is separate from.
Oh.
This is comments that the DUC is seeking.
Okay.
Based on the permitting, which is, is separate from what Seneca Falls did.
Okay. So the, the thing is, is that we could create another resolution that says we support the, the closure date as defined by, and we can use some of the verbiage that Seneca Falls has for why that permit was.
Yeah, we could do that.
We, yeah, okay.
So, okay, and I think. Yep.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. Okay. So that we can still do that. In other words, it's.
Yep, two different things.
And it just, I think, um.
It's going on, not, you know.
No, and I appreciate what you're saying, Counselor Camera, because I think this is kind of goes to the ethanol plant and it goes to the gas storage. You know, things outside our jurisdiction that we want to do to protect our lake and protect our, our, our area, things that we have done as a council. We can only have commentaries and support of different actions. It's those other legislative bodies that control the final decision. And our input hopefully is, is valuable, like Counselor Regan mentioned, we, we hope it has an impact and carries through. And I think what this also does is sets the stage, not only for Seneca Meadows, but the Ontario County landfill. And what are we going to do in ten years, fifteen years, twenty years, when these landfills are closed? And how are we going to handle our waste? So there's a lot going on.
There's a lot going on in the state. It's still, we're still waiting. We're going to have to comment. The state is about to fini, finish the draft of the state environmental, whatever the solid waste management plan for New York State. And there's going to be a comment period, and I hope we'll all in Geneva be very active in doing comments and providing feedback. But I, I do want to support this 2025 date because it was based on the analysis of the host community. And that date, I, I think is important.
I would suggest requesting staff and legal to take a look at the resolution that would do that. Yep.
No, and I can do the draft and then you can fix it. Thank you.
Counselor Peeler?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you as well for putting this together. Um, the air quality alone impacts the entire region. I drive past the Ontario County landfill four times a day. Uh, over the past thirteen years, I've lost three windshields. Okay. And I have a whole process of closing down the ventilation of my car to pass that landfill. All right. That's how bad it is. I don't, it's true. So, uh, and, and I was recently on the thruway going to Syracuse and we could smell the other landfill from the thruway. So the air quality is really important to travel and for, for our economic development and for agro-tourism, which is largely outside. So I'm thinking, I think this is great, being opposed to this expansion.
Counselor Burl.
Um, yes, I'd also want to, uh, thank everyone that was involved in this. Um, I also, um, second, uh, Ken's idea on having a, a separate resolution for a closing date. Um, and the more we talk about this, the long-term impact actually is changing human behavior. It's not the immediate impact of closing landfill A or closing landfill B. It's about everyone that's breathing on earth needs to start looking at the way we purchase, we recycle and we reuse. So, um, I save, as an example, I save all of my glass jars. I don't put a single glass jar in my blue bin because there's no guarantee that that glass jar is actually going to be recycled. I actually take my glass jars to a local business on Exchange Street that will reuse them for bulk sales of product. And everybody can do that. So, um, again, I was on the thruway coming from the east twice over this past weekend. And the smell from Seneca Meadows was, um, quite frankly unbearable. It, it, it is. So, um, so thank you, everyone involved in this. Um, keep up the good fight, change your behavior, um, set your compost box up in your backyard. We can all do this. You've heard me preach about this before. And if you don't know how to compost, um, I'm happy to help anyone that is interested. Compost does not smell, and if it's done properly, it does not affect rodents. So thank you again.
Counselor Camera?
Well, just on that point, because it comes advice to preview that we should start composting. Um, I believe that the state is going to make a, I believe the state, the, uh, solid waste management plan is going to focus a lot on food waste and getting it out of the waste stream. Uh, approximately thirty percent of the waste stream in New York State is food waste that is compostable. And so it's also one of the fractions that probably smells a lot when it decomposes. And when it decomposes in the landfill where it's robbed, not, not, it doesn't have oxygen and it's an anaerobic decomposition, it makes a lot of methane. So when we compost, it's aerobically, we don't make methane. We, we make carbon dioxide, but we don't make methane, which is much more impactful on our, you know, our climate. So we should all get ready and I think our comments as a city and everything else should be very much focused on that fraction because if the state can push the compost law down to a, a lower level, to the household level, and we can get this out of the waste stream, it'll have a big impact on the entire waste stream. It'll be, uh, it'll be really a big deal.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Camera.
Hi.
Counselor Brim.
Counselor Brim.
Aye.
Counselor Noon. Counselor Galanese.
Aye.
Counselor Burl.
Aye.
Counselor Peeler.
Aye.
Counselor Regan.
Aye.
Mayor Valentino.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next is a resolution approving an opioid settlement against TIVA as presented by litigation counsel, presented by our city manager.
I believe we may have litigation counsel on on the line as well. Um the resolution is just in regards to the opioid litigation with TIVA, who have a settlement to pay the city over eighteen years, a total of twenty five thousand dollars. So I'll I'll go to to counsel for further information on this.
Uh good evening, everybody. I'm John Cherandolo, and I'm here with Kristin Mendoza. Uh and we uh we bring to you tonight uh some more good news on the opioid front. Uh one more uh settlement, which I believe is uh maybe the fifth one total. Uh and they keep uh coming in uh uh not monthly, but uh every so often. I think the next ones that'll be coming up will be the retailers and uh they should be coming up uh somewhat soon. But uh tonight, we want to talk about Teva. Uh and the Teva agreement uh we've uh sent to the city manager and council uh a broad outline of the settlement as proposed. Uh it does give to Geneva some certain uh and uh that's a minimum sum uh that uh will be paid to Geneva. Uh and Kristin, I don't know, do you want to go through the uh the agreement real quick?
Sure, yes. And I just wanted to make it clear that the amount, the sum certain in this for this agreement is that it's twelve thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars and eleven cents. Um so basically, this is uh, I'm getting an echo, I'm sorry if I is there any way?
You sound good here, Kristin.
Okay, all right, thanks. I'm just hearing my echo there. It sounds better now. Um so basically, with with what's going with this settlement with TIVA, it's a little bit different than the previous ones um in a few in a few ways that I'll I'll go over. But essentially, this is um Geneva by virtue of its population. Um it's not included in direct payments, but just by virtue of being a litigating subdivision and filing suit, the uh state has agreed to set aside a this a certain amounts of money for litigating subdivisions that are non, they call them the non-direct pay subdivisions. So uh by virtue of filing a complaint, Geneva is entitled to these payments. They aren't direct. They do have to be applied for, just like the other, um I believe with Allergan and um some of the previous settlements, you, we have to apply, or Geneva will have to apply to Oasis, which is the Office of Addiction Services and Support. And we are currently um in the process of obtaining details from Oasis, and we will be updating you soon about that. I do have, I'm trying to set up a meeting with them this week um about the application process and the timing. So um be on the lookout for that. But this is, as uh stated, these funds, um this is a guaranteed amount to the city of Geneva. By virtue of being a litigating, non-direct pay subdivision, you also are allowed to apply to Oasis for additional funds. And that's uh, we'll find out more information about that also when when we speak with Oasis. But like I said, you're get with this TIVA settlement, the city has guaranteed the twelve thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars and eleven cents. Um all funds must be used for approved uses. This is um in the documentation that we we provided the city. And um the difference with this, we have um at this point, it's our understanding um that we don't have the same option of applying to New York State for the payment of our attorney's fees as we did in the previous settlement agreements. Um so at this point, our contingency fee uh needs to be paid from the city of Geneva's settlement proceeds, but we're doing it at fifteen percent, which is the cap that Judge Polster set in the M D L. And that's what I have for now. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
I I I do want to add just one other thing to what Kristin just said. Uh we do have the availability, even though the state has is not guaranteed uh our fees. Um we do have the availability to make application to the federal M D L uh lawsuit uh for our fees. Uh they are not paying all the fees, but they'll pay some portion to the extent that we do get some portion back. Uh we will make sure that uh that gets back to the city at the end of the day. But as as of this time, uh we don't know exactly how that's gonna go or 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 what uh that final number will be. But uh the max uh charge is gonna be fifteen percent of the settlement. Uh assuming we don't get anything back, but we we will get something back. I just don't know what it is.
Counselor Cameron.
Is there any cost out of pocket for the city of accepting this?
No.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Out of settlement, not out of pocket.
Right.
John and Kristin, thank you very much for the information. We appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And included in your packet is that uh how that agreement aligns, what those amounts are. Um again, it's it's over time, so we're not seeing that twelve thousand dollars is one month sum. But in, yeah, eighteen years of smaller payments.
Clerk, please call the roll.
I'm sorry, we didn't get a motion there. Mayor, we didn't get a motion?
Have we had a motion?
I thought we did.
No, I don't think we did.
I have Counsel Noon or Counsel Peeler. I apologize. I thought we had that on the table.
Counselor Noon. Counselor Galanese.
Aye.
Counselor Burl.
Aye.
Counselor Peeler.
Aye.
Counselor Regan.
Aye.
Counselor Cameron.
Aye.
Counselor Brim.
Aye.
Mayor Valentino.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Is that fifteen percent fee gonna carry over a twelve year payment?
Yeah. Next is um appointments to boards and commissions.
Thank you very much, y'all.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Can you talk to all these people? Well, I'm sorry, um
Pointers to boards and commissions?
I would like to, can we table this? I'd like to talk to these people. I haven't talked to any of these people.
They're recommended by the Ethics Board.
They give interviews.
I, you can make a motion to table, but
I don't know. I mean, it, aren't aren't we supposed to talk to them at all? No?
Very similar to some other boards and commissions, you know, the influence
They they give us a recommendation of who they want and they'll bring it forward to council. Absolutely. So I
If you'd like to make a motion.
No, I'm just, I'm, okay, so
Counselor
Did you know any of these people? You know, yeah. Do we all, I mean, there there's
I trust Victor Nelson and the the two that are left on the committee.
I trust Victor Nelson explicitly, I mean.
If these boards are taking the time out to interview these people, and this is who they feel.
Okay.
You know what I mean? And it's very tough to fill these seats because we've 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 gone through this. And so we should be fortunate that we're in this position. So
I appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jeffrey Giger, Christina DeJesus, and James Petropolis to the Board of Ethics.
That was the Jesus.
Was that?
The Jesus.
Is the proper pronunciation. And uh appoint Peter Gelati as an alternate.
We have a motion. We have a second. Second by Counsel Noon. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Galanese.
Aye.
Counselor Burl.
Aye.
Counselor Peeler.
Aye.
Counselor Regan.
Aye.
Counselor Cameron.
Aye.
Counselor Brim.
Aye.
Counselor Noon. Mayor Valentino.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next is mayor and council reports. I'm gonna start at my left and work my way around.
No, 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 no.
Wake me up. You're, okay.
I'm sorry.
I like, I was looking at the clock thinking, boy, we're gonna break a record. Don't say that.
The Human Rights Commission recommends appointing, reappointing Sid Moore in often place.
Awesome. Is that a motion? I need a second. Counselor Galanese, discussion. Two great people, yep. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cameron.
Aye.
Counselor Brim.
Aye.
Counselor Noon. Counselor Galanese.
Aye.
Counselor Burl.
Aye.
Counselor Peeler.
Aye.
Counselor Regan.
Aye.
Mayor Valentino.
Aye.
Motion carried. One more.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Dana Hollenbach to the Local Development Corporation.
Second, Counsel Cameron seconds it. Discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Galanese.
Aye.
Counselor Burl.
Aye.
Counselor Peeler.
Aye.
Counselor Regan.
Aye.
Counselor Cameron.
Aye.
Counselor Brim.
Aye.
Counselor Noon. Mayor Valentino.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next is mayor and council reports. I'm gonna start at my left, Counsel Galanese, and work my way to the right.
Can I just interrupt for a minute? Did we want to get the public comment in before this?
Public comment comes right after this.
For the 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 initial public comment, which you had addressed.
There's a second public comment on our agenda that comes right after mayor and council reports.
Right, thank you.
So that's when Andrew, Counsel Galanese.
So I want to use my time. I don't have anything with my my boards. So I want to discuss a few things, and it's something that I brought up a couple of years ago, and it fell on deaf ears. I'm not blaming anybody, but I'm gonna bring bring it up again because it's been brought to my attention several times in the last couple of weeks. So on the corner of Pauline and Washington and uh northeast corner, there is always a car park there. And it is very, it's it's a health and safety. There should be a no parking sign there. There is on most of the corners, but not there. And then also, on the corner of West Street and William Street, there should be a four-way stop there. Now there, I know you're gonna say, we're gonna get a hold of the police department, they're gonna do a study, they're gonna set this up. I feel as though this council has the power to be able to put signs up in those locations. There's no reason that West Street and William should not be a four-way stop. It's it's within two hundred yards of a school in Washington. And West Street had the four-way stop, which is not even in the close proximity of the school. In between West Street, uh on West Street, between William and Washington, there's an abundance of kids that I see every day running back and forth to that playground. They're, someone's gonna get hit there.
That's the only intersection in the town that requires a crossing guard during school, and it's not a four-way stop.
Right.
That's a treacherous area during school time.
True.
And I even fear for the crossing guard.
Right. And then the other thing is that I want to bring up of something that I think that everyone in the country at this point today has uh heard about or have felt from watching the football game the other night. And my point that I'm making is that emergency response agencies, we need to find more funding for them. Every second counts to save a life. Our Geneva Fire Department with our new fire chief has initiated to go hand in hand and partner with the ambulance services of the county. And that is a huge success, but we need to do more. Like I said, every second counts. Our police, our fire, and the E M Ts in our area do a one heck of a job. But we need to find more funding so they can save more lives and give them the tools and the proper money that they need. I mean, we need to have, uh, you know, it's funded by the county, but we need to have a local city of Geneva ambulance service. Feel strongly in it. Yep, that's it. Thank you.
Counsel Brim.
Well, nothing to report from the housing authority, but I definitely do want to be in agreement with uh Counselor Galanese on some of that as well. Having to drive through that to drop my son off at preschool, it's definitely interesting to see. I've actually almost watched the crossing guard get hit several times in the last six months. So I I think that's something we definitely need to address sooner rather than later.
See, the city manager taking notes, so we should hear something. Counsel Cameron.
Um, thank you. Um certainly, I'm concerned about that too. I had kids in this district. I guess it's a chronic problem of the crossing guards. I think that that's something that we can address that's financially feasible, uh doesn't require a lot of, we should signage these areas and with that being contained. I wanted a couple of notes. One of, one thing is, is that I wanted to uh tell you that you you may have all heard about the um uh the housing assessment uh uh project that the county is doing. Um and I I was interested to see, there's a, the headline on the Finger Lakes Times is about Seneca County doing a housing uh study. And uh as you all know, Laura uh Salamendra is pretty big on this housing issue. And the, and and she, one of the things she says is housing is economic development. So solving the housing problem for a variety of income levels um does create economic development. Uh and uh we should pay attention to that. Anyway, um we met with uh Counselor Salamendra and I met with um the, two of the people who are running this study. And they want the participation of the public. So um Ryan Davis is the economic development person for the county. He's taken over for Mike Manikowski. And Alyssa Bub is the deputy uh administrator for the county. And we had a a almost a two-hour conversation with with them yesterday. And just to get our bearings on what they need and what what we can do to 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 get this, to to make this a really good report, it kind of gives us a roadmap of how do we address all the variety of housing problems that there are in the in in the county and specifically focusing on our, you know, we're half the population and almost of the of the county, we've got housing problems of every type. Anyway, the uh county, uh the the economic development person gave me a uh gave us a brief to just read to you. It's it's only a two paragraphs long, but it just tells you a little bit about this. I'd like to get it on the record. Well, I'm gonna read it for the public too, because we were gonna want the public to also go to the website and participate in a survey. Okay, because they are, they're needing feedback. So Ontario County has initiated a countywide housing needs assessment and retained an experienced consultant, urban planners, they're from Philadelphia, to assist in that effort. The purpose of the study is to provide data to stakeholders about the current housing stock and new construction offerings, identify existing and anticipated housing needs, to highlight disparities between availability and need, identify the factors contributing to that disparity, and develop strategies to address those factors. Ultimately, the project will document the existing housing conditions, identify market and other forces that affect supply and demand now and in the future, and identify gaps in maintaining equitable, safe access to safe, resilient, and reliable housing, and identify opportunities for improving and expanding housing options. Uh there, the second paragraph is a little bit, you know, more detail and everything else, but the the, I I don't have to, I'll I'll put that in the record uh and Lori can then put that in there. But one of the things that uh is important is is that they asked us yesterday, please drive people to the website and to to participate in the survey. And um I I, the way to do it is, it's not, it's not really complicated. Just type in Ontario County Housing Survey in Google, and it'll take you to the spot in the uh uh in in the county website, and you just go down to the bottom of the page, and the link is there. It just says Ontario County Housing Survey. I took the survey before I got here, and it only takes about fifteen minutes. And we should, I, you know, we should drive as many people to this as possible of all kinds of different socioeconomic backgrounds, because we need to have a very representative um uh sample uh of concerns and one and and information about uh um all the, all the different um stratifications of people that live in this, you know, in the city. Um and so that's a very important um thing to do. I hope we can maybe put it on the the city website and just say participate in the housing survey. It's very important, and I'm gonna try to do some outreach and actually just knock on some doors and get people to do it because I'm afraid that it might be only us are in, the internet-enabled people, and we don't get enough uh people who, you know, are um let's say, ha- having other challenges in their lives and finding a survey a difficult thing uh to uh to to catch up to and to fill out, even though they may have the most serious housing problems in this, in this, in this, in this in the county and in the city. Um in some of the notes that uh Laura provided to us in the last me, you know, the last thing, she's, we're talking about we were talking about hundreds and hundreds of hotel rooms all around the county that have, you know, uh single parents with multiple kids living there, not for a week, two weeks, for months and months. And can you imagine how difficult that is and how difficult that life is? And um so for us to, we've got, as we talked yesterday, it's, this study is gonna come up with multiple strategies to uh to, uh, um, to address this problem, and I think it'll, and as we agree, you know, one of the things is, there are signs all over town about businesses wanting people to work. Even the post office has a sign outside that says, "Help Wanted." Well, the thing is, is that it's very hard to get a house or rent an apartment in the city of Geneva. And, you know, if, uh, so we've got, the, the housing boils over into also transportation. If you live, let's say, out of town, you can't get to work because you don't have a car and blah, blah, blah. It just goes on and on. So this is a major problem. It's now, it's an actually a national problem. If you, all you have to do is look at the news. So hopefully we can come up with something that's really smart and helps our residents and people that have been here a long time who are struggling and, uh, and impact the kids that are involved, uh, you know, in the housing situation so they can have a better childhood. Um, second thing I wanted to report on is just that I keep talking about this, you know, railroad, this, this transportation study and moving the railroad. And, um, it's getting there. Uh, and we're, the, the, the steering committee has been constituted. It's made up of, um, and you know some of these people, but it's, it's made up of representatives of the different municipalities that are involved. Um, of course, obviously Tom Harvey, the director of planning for Ontario County. Jody Bennix is the Genesee Transportation Council representative of where the funding is coming from. Laura Leoni is from the New York State DOT. Then there's Ron Allen, Town of Phelps, Bob McCarthy, Town of Geneva, Mike Chaney, Village of Phelps, and then I'm right now the city representative, uh, on this. Uh, so I, I, in a sense, uh, I mean, we're gonna involve the city manager in all this stuff eventually, but, um, we're sort of just doing a lot, all the running around right now. And the, the meetings, the, the local committee, and I, I want to give the local committee a, a shout out in a, in a minute, but you have a question? The funding is for the study, and the funding is secure. The Genesee Transportation Council has given, um, most of the funds is approximately a hundred and thirty thousand, and that will be used to hire the consultant that's going to write the report for this section. It's Phelps to Geneva, which is called Area Two. And, um, actually, uh, so that study is going to give us a roadmap on how we might be able to move the railroad. And I just want you to understand something that, um, this started out with these meetings with this local committee of people who were interested in doing this and opening up the sixth ward, uh, to the lake. And that local committee and this, we, we met started sometime in the middle of, sometime back in twenty twenty-one. And it was Dan Bellevue, Dan McGowan, Gary Baxter, Don Vdora, Jan also came to some of those meetings. And we just kicked it around until eventually Mike Manikowski visited, visited us and Tom Harvey. And we had this, you know, productive discussions with them. And it's, I'm happy to say that when the RFP was put together to get the consultant, there were some very nice paragraphs in the study. And let me just read you one, for example, the objective. Okay, I'll, I won't read all the other stuff, but the objective. "The project will identify potential rail-enabled industrial development sites along the Finger Lakes Railway, rail and Norfolk Southern Rail Corridor in the study area. Development capacities will be developed for the candidate properties and their impact of supporting transportation infrastructure evaluated." It's, you know, it's consultant speak, but anyway. "Comprehensive plan and zoning changes will be recommended to support the proposed development. At the same time, options for either relocating the existing Finger Lakes Railways, rail yard away from Seneca Lake will be sought and compared to options for improving aesthetics and connectivity between the city of Geneva's northeastern neighborhoods from the lakefront. Finally, options for rerouting the Finger Lakes Rail Yard to eliminate its route within the core downtown area of the city of Geneva will be sought and compared to the costs for making any identified improvements in rail geometry, signage, operations in the city's downtown area to improve rail slash vehicular bicycle and pedestrian safety." So it, it recognizes our comprehensive plan in another paragraph and that we said we wanted to, uh, deal with this Finger Lakes Railway in another place in the tasks. It talks about forming a subcommittee and providing input from us, the residents, and into this, 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 uh, project. So I'm very excited. And, um, a, a, you know, that, that, that information is actually in the RFP that has been sent out to consultants. So one of the focuses, and the way they're gonna respond is one of the things they're gonna have to say is, we're gonna, we're gonna address this issue.
Has anyone brought up an engineer's estimated cost on how much it's gonna cost to remediate the railroad once it's moved?
That, that should be in, you know, in the study, uh, in, in the study in some way.
So you're just not gonna move the railroad?
No, no, no. There's gonna be estimates of, of all kinds of things and impacts. And so that's one of the, I think, I would imagine that's something that we're gonna have to say. It's great. Okay, we can move the rail yard over here, let's say, and move it towards Wa- Waterloo or a little bit north and get it off the, the lakefront. And then we only have one rail line going through, and now we want to reestablish our rights of way at Evans, Gramscion Street Extension, you know, or things like that. Yeah, are there environmental issues we have to remediate where we are crossing those lines? What do we have to do? That's a good question. And I think that they might, the study might be able to make an estimate of the cost or not. I don't know. This is, that's something that will be brought up, and you're welcome to. Once, once they, this committee gets formed and we have our first meeting, then they're going to may, open it up for, uh, pu- public input and more input from counselors. The city manager at some point is gonna have to be involved when we get into some of the, the hard, hardcore. So, um, it's, yeah, that's a good question. Um, and, um, but I'm excited about it. I think this project, by the way, is gonna be easier to figure out than the housing survey. The housing survey just seems to me to be extremely complex, and there's no silver bullet that solves the problem. It's gonna be multiple strategies. They're gonna have to address that problem. Whereas here, it's, it's more cut and dry. Do we move, do we move the rail, railroad? If the answer is yes, then where do we get the fund? But, um, it's the state, the, the Genesee Transportation Council recognizes that this is a big economic development opportunity, not only for the, the railroad to be more efficient, but for what it opens up for the sixth ward and our access to the lake for Geneva as a whole. So it's a really big deal. And, um, the last thing I want to do is I'm just trying to make up for, um, you know, one of the things I think when we had that, um, we had our meeting and we, we removed some members from our police budget review board. And it was sort of a fast-track vote, and we voted them off, uh, by a majority of the council. And, um, I was disappointed we'd done it. And I, and then one of the things that I, as I said in the article that I, uh, wrote, uh, for, uh, the Finger Lakes Times, I kind of forgot that one of the things that we're responsible for is, um, supporting the Constitution and our oath of office. So I'm just gonna take the oath of office again right now. I'm just gonna say, uh, that I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of New York State, and that I will faithfully perform my duties of the Office of City Counselor, City of Geneva, according to the best of my ability. So I, I want people in the city of Geneva to feel they have protection under the Constitution and First Amendment rights, and I will try to do my best when it comes to council business to not step on those rights. And that's the end of my report. Councillor Regan.
Thank you. Um, uh, well, most people are aware now that we've kicked off the one hundred and twenty-fifth celebration of Geneva as a city. Um, we, we had a kickoff on New Year's Day. It was well-attended and the spirit there was wonderful. Um, I appreciate many of my colleagues here who, who, um, were able to, uh, make their way down there. Um, so I did want to highlight just a couple of things that will be going on for those of you who are unable to be there and to look forward to in the, in the, you know, and then as we, as the year goes on. Uh, first of all, if you know of people in your neighborhood, or just spread the word, who live in a home that was here in eighteen ninety-eight, a hundred and twenty-five years ago, yeah, please, um, grab one of these signs or have them grab one. These will be as they are now at the city clerk. Uh, so that we should see them sprouting up in front of houses and businesses all around the city. Um, just to get, you know, the idea out, there's, there's a long history here, and, um, a lot of places that you know were here when the city was first begun. So that's one, one tiny little thing that, um, I'm hoping you'll start to see as time goes on. Um, most of what the committee, which is a wonderful committee, has planned, will take place from February twenty-seventh to March fourth. That was picked, it sounds just sort of random. It kind of was. It was looking at, um, school calendars, et cetera. It could have really happened anytime this year, as long as we recognize the actual day that this all became official, which was January first. So we've covered that already. Um, so, uh, I think some of the things to look forward to, you'll, you'll just see kind of develop over time. But I guess I'm just gonna, rather than go through everything that is being planned, a lot of which is being planned by individual organizations and, uh, agencies and businesses. So you'll see people, um, doing their own thing, which we really support and want to know more about. If you, if you have an idea that you'd like to do, uh, we can help promote it. We can add it to our updates of this, uh, which I left for people to grab on their way in. Um, this is just really thrown together. I'm not a designer and I did it in Word and you can kind of tell. But, um, it, it's gonna be updated when, when things are all finalized and we have where everything's taking place and so forth. But I think that, that what I'd like to highlight the most is the, um, is Saturday, the fourth, the last day that we officially sell, have planned events. Um, we will have, um, at the end, at four o'clock, um, at the Smith Opera House, there'll be an all-community gathering. Probably among the, uh, most featured things there will be a video, which is going to be a then and now. The things we've discovered are amazing, um, what was happening in eighteen ninety-four and what's happening now. So one quick thing is, um, believe it or not, on that exact same day, um, March fourth, eighteen ninety-eight, John Philip Sousa played on the very stage that we will be standing on. So you can expect to hear a John Philip Sousa tune from somebody, uh, as that night goes on. Um, but that video will, will do a bit of that. Following the video, uh, and the, the celebration though will be cake, of course. Um, there'll be a, a cocktail party with the location yet to be announced. Um, but it will be in a spot that will be a good stopping point to watch the fireworks, which will be over Seneca Lake. So, um, lots of other stuff to report and look for, but, um, I hope you all pick up a fin, which are back there. They're also at the city clerk's office. Um, and wear it proudly. Also, somewhere around town, we sold these at the pickup event, but just so you know they're, you can be looking for them. This handy magnet here, I feel like Vanuatu, you know? Uh, this is, this is like a stone material, and it's great, and they're, they're probably about five bucks. So, you know, you can grab one of these, you can pass them. Of course, you gotta have your coffee mug. There you go, coffee mug. And, uh, the hat, perfect for winter, and the scarf. So, and the hat comes in white too, for those who prefer it. Uh, and then finally, there are these kooz, koozies, which will be out and about. These are free also. So if you collect them, there's a thing to collect. The scarf, I think they're fifteen.
Or two for forty.
Freezing? I'll, I'll connect with you. Yeah. So that's it from there. Um, as far as the Green Committee goes, we, they did not meet only because the, the, our regular date would have been December twentieth. And really, I mean, you can't expect a lot of productivity on, on a date like that. However, um, we were meeting with, um, talking with Dave Sharman, who has managed to get to the bottom of a complicated schedule. We have the rink reserved for April twenty-second, which will be Earth Day, first of all. But it's also, uh, Mission Zero, which is an event that happened last year for the first time. Booths and all kinds of information, activities, and sustainable, um, you know, initiatives i- i- that you can, you can go and enjoy learning about and, and partake in. It will be free to city residents, so that's something, um, to be watching for more information on. And then I just wanted to, uh, briefly comment, you know, you can't help at the end, as you start a new year, and as we start, as a council, our last, um, council together, uh, you know, to look back on some of the things that, uh, we hoped for. And I think everyone had different ideas on, on their ultimate goals and so forth. But, um, I, I do want to myself personally dig into some of the things that I have, um, that I was hoping to move forward, some of which we, we have done, but seem to be slipping through the cracks. Um, a lot of it is what we were talking about earlier, just regarding composting and how things are going in the city with the facility that we did a lot to support in our time together, which is on Doran Ave, the Geneva Resource and Recovery Park. We did put in legislation that would allow that to be a transfer station in addition to accepting compost as it currently does. Um, you know, I, I, I hope to relook at where that stands and, and, um, make, get things moving in a progressive way. I know the state is doing their thing. Uh, there's no harm in Geneva being prepared and pushing these kinds of thoughts um, as we look ahead and await what the state is gonna ask us to do. We did hear last month from Jewel Assets, um, which is, um, the company who will be managing our community choice aggregate, which makes a more sustainable kind of energy source, the default on our bills. Um, I, a lot of people have questions about this, so be on the lookout over the next month and a half for public information sessions. There'll be, um, uh, two or three of them, I believe probably three, um, live with probably a Zoom component. Um, all that's yet to be determined. But they'll be advertising those through the city, through the website, probably in the city blast, as well as in the Finger Lakes Times. So if you have questions, um, you know, just be aware that these are happening and, and be on the lookout for it so that you can be pretty well-informed as that kicks in. It's something, um, I'm really happy that we're moving forward with. And, um, a- again, is, is along the same lines of kind of a sustainability, uh, uh, you know, uh, a sustainability thing for the city to pursue. So I think that's, that's it for me, and, uh, thank you. Happy New Year to everyone. Yeah, I'm sorry.
So is the history of the making of the one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary on our city website? Because I know on Facebook there was a big discussion that I saw of questioning how we're one hundred and twenty-five years. But it's the city forming. Because we were a village prior to us being a city.
If you look on the back of this, there is a short history of it, also explaining why it's confusing.
Do we have that on a city website?
This is probably not. I wrote it in about five minutes.
That's what I'm saying. I think that it needs to be on there. Why wouldn't it be?
It's, um, i- in eighteen oh six, we were named a village, but this, we're celebrating now. I think it's always good to celebrate your own city, but this is actually a real date, which is when we were incorporated as a city. Yeah, so it has, obviously, the area and city council. We, we're a hundred and twenty-five years old. So, um, uh, yeah, obviously a lot happened here before we were officially a city, some of it under the name of Geneva. But we're, we're, we're gonna celebrate this one as our, our birthday this year.
Councillor Peeler.
I just want to also extend my thanks and gratitude for Jan for spearheading this birthday party and all the volunteers that she's amassed and the city staff that were part of last weekend. I thought it was great. Um, my family partook in the events. And, uh, some of the numbers from some, from that participation will be in my report. But I wanted to say, the last time we talked about this, I was pondering if there was a word for a one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary, because there's like- Cause there's like bicentennial and centennial, and I found there is a word for the one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of something. And it's nearly impronounceable. And let me tell you what this thing is called, if this is called, it's a quasi-quicentennial. Quasi-quicentennial is more Q's than any word should possibly have. So that's a, a quasi-quicentennial, I'll let you look at it right there, it's the most bizarre word I've ever seen, it looks, it's gotta be Polish. So. Yeah.
Yeah, just to let everyone know, to not interrupt you, Bill, but Mike Cotillo did a really nice story back, I think, two months ago, a month ago. That did the history. And he, that word right that I tried to pronounce.
Quas- quasi-quicentennial.
What's that word, Amy? You know it.
Quasi-quicentennial. So, uh, the Recreation Board did not meet due to illness in December. And I think that illness is raging through the city, if anyone knows anyone with a stomach bug right now. Um, but I do have a, a briefing from our Director of Recreation and some numbers from our skating event, uh, on the first. And they were happy to accommodate over two hundred and seventy guests for skating on, uh, New Year's Day. And that is phenomenal, and it was all free for residents and I believe all guests alike. It was first come, first served, and anyone could, uh, enjoy, um, some skating. We saw many people we knew there and the, uh, celebration over at the Dove Block was packed as well. Um, I'm also happy to see things that were very important to me when I took my oath of office. Moving forward, like the marina, right? It's very important to me, is, is, as far as getting it done right and making sure that it, uh, was soft, saw through. Um, and one of the other things, and I hope we pick back up, is the commercial activity that is going to then be. Evoked and cultivated by that marina down by the lake, there's not a lot of stuff to do, but down by the lake besides walking around. And I'm down there from May to August, every year fishing, and the same group of tourists or the same type of tourists that come by there. Ask me the same question when I speak to them, it's, what do you do down here? We've already walked down to the, down to the state park and back three times. Right, and they're there for more days, we wanna stay here at the lake. Is there anywhere, is there anything that we can buy, eat lunch, do something? So I hope the, I hope the city continues that, cause last year I tried to start the conversation of getting mobile vending permits allowed. Down by the lakefront area, and it essentially stalled for, from what I can tell is staff commitment. Because Bid met, I met with Bid, and they were warm to the idea, it wasn't a resounding hot thing, but they were warm to the idea. Maybe piloting an attempt to allow it, cause right now we don't allow it without special permit use. Every. No, I'm there all the time. Yes, you know, the, you know, you know, all the time, you know metaphorically what that means? All the time, all the time, I don't ever see you down there, except in the morning with coffee, with some of your, some of your select friends. Alright, so, a lot. So, uh, so, so yes, I'm down there a lot, if you come see me by the wall, or come see me by the Ramada docks, as we like to call them. So, uh, but anyway, I do wanna see that commercial activity kind of developed and, and, and expanded. Because that's going to keep something like a marina viable. So I'm, I'm. I'm very keen on that moving forward. Um, to go through the briefing from our Director of Recreation, let me pull that up, that went to sleep here. So the Recreation Department and the Geneva Family YMCA is excited to announce that the return of its popular City Seniors Gold Card Membership is. Is beginning this month, and the Y. Through their seniors gold membership program, which began in two thousand and fifteen, allows city residents over the age of sixty-five. An opportunity to benefit from the YMCA's programs and their facilities. Participants of this program will receive membership free of charge. So I'm glad to see that we included that in the budget, by the way, that was a budget decision that we made, I'm glad that, that we did that. We don't have a lot of support for seniors who wanna be active in this community, that's the main one. Um, so this is gonna go through twenty twenty-three. And. In the peak of its program since its involvement, it had over two hundred and fifty residents signed up. And they're really, they're really, you know, they're, they're hoping for people to get involved and, and take part in that. If they wanna give the Y a call, three one five seven eight nine sixteen sixteen, which has been the Y's phone number for our. Uh, so that's seven eight nine sixteen sixteen, give them a call, or you can call the Rec Department at seven eight nine five hundred, five thousand and five. Or five double up five. Um, the spring programming signups will start in February for youth soccer. And spring break recreation programs will be held during April break, give the Rec a call if you wanna be involved in those. We're having our Learn to Skate Program, which will be three and up at the Rec Department, and that is Sundays. At the ice skating rink, and session two is going to be January twenty-ninth through March fourth. So the first session has already, I believe, run or we're, we're running. Times will be twelve thirty P M to one. To one P M, it's a twenty-five minute session. Over the hill hockey. So I don't, I don't know if I endorse that, I mean, that's gonna, that sounds dangerous, man. So over the hill hockey, uh, is gonna be, is Sundays, January seventh through March twelfth, that might be fun to watch, actually. So, uh, March, the January seventh through March twelfth, and that time is gonna be seven thirty to nine P M. Those are, those are under the lights, and there's a fee, fee involved, fifteen dollars per night. And the next Rec Advisory Board Meeting is scheduled for the eighteenth at five thirty at City Hall. January eighteenth. And that is my report for Rec or my briefing for Rec, cause we didn't have, we didn't have our meeting due to some multiple illnesses. Did you have a question?
Okay, uh, yeah, my question is, as I recall from the, the budget support of the Silver Sneakers, it was for half a year. And we were gonna look at it again halfway through, um, and I, I just wanna say, um, yeah. And, and one of the reasons was to see also the usage, because we didn't really have statistics on that. And that's something I personally would like to see, we have very little recreation type money. And, um, you know, uh, we have proven statistics on the basketball program, for example. I would love to see money go towards that, but, um, the, and, and also.
This is my time.
I know, but I'm, I was clarifying.
There aren't questions, these are statements.
Clarifying, if we could find out about twenty twenty-three, sorry for the interruption.
Well, I, I, okay, thank you. Coming, well, so also, one of the, one of the boards that I'm involved, I mean, ser- seriously, I mean, right? World's Border, I got told to abstain from going after Ken when he decided to go nuts about. Every day, all the time, all the time. Thanks, Ken, real professional, really, bravo, class A, once again. So, uh, I'm also a member of the Finger Lakes Works Workforce Investment Board, and they met last month. And some of the topics that they were bringing forward were, uh, basically non-participation rates of our workforce. We have hundreds of jobs available, good paying jobs in Seneca County, in Ontario County. And if you need training, there is training available through the Skill Up website, that training is free of charge. And you can check it out at the fingerlakesworks.com website. Now, that website can, those trainings can give you trainings in office skills, in software certifications. And many of the things that you need to basically get your foot in the door at a, at a decent paying job. A lot of these jobs started over forty thousand dollars a year, that's tremendous in my opinion. Um, let's see here, they also discuss some of their marketing initiatives, changing around their website. And planning for the following year for all of their high school and youth events, which includes Finger Lakes Works with their hands. Which is a great event that teaches, uh, kids that they can start working right out of high school in the trades. Which if anyone's ever needed a plumber and electrician, you're gonna need those jobs to, to basically get through, uh, reasonable homeownership. And again, that's fingerlakesworks.com, and if you need any type of. Uh. Kind of a. Direction, heading, heading in the right direction, check out that website, cause it's really targeted toward our county and Seneca County. Alright, and thank you. Council Burrell.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. I wanna thank Frank Galanese, um, for, um, bringing up the two issues of, um, traffic control. Which is, uh, parking and also the four-way stop, um, at West and William. Um, in my short tenure in this seat, I've had great success working with Mark Perry and Joe Vinuti. With parking issues, and I think if you make a simple phone call to Joe, um, you'll be quite pleased. Um, I'm, I've always been very much into parking, um, that all started just by, uh, being employed in downtown Geneva. And, um, uh, car manufacturers and, uh, handheld computers. Um, make distracted driving, uh, just a constant hazard. Um, no matter where we are, and around a school, it just makes common sense to make that a four-way stop. So, um, if, if we look at making changes and decisions based on common sense. Uh, like you said, we don't need to study, we don't need to make any money, or, or we don't need to, uh, put anything in our budget. Um, I think if you contact Joe, we can get the job done, and I, I applaud you for bringing that up. Um, and I also wanna thank Counselor Camera for alerting us to the survey, um, for Ontario County Housing. Um, when I return home tonight, I'm going to do that survey. Um, my church was one of the founding members of Family Promise of Ontario County. And my family is also active in that board. Um, the last I knew, there were, um, the count was there were a little better than three hundred and twenty-five. Homeless families just in Ontario County. Um, if I gave you the numbers of homeless children that attend the Geneva City School District. Most of you in this room would collapse, but it's for real. So, um, I will spread the word about the survey, that's very, very important. Uh, one of the board members of Family Promise of Ontario County, I believe heads, um, housing for Ontario County. So I will work on spreading that word, but I hope all of you will take Ken's comments, um, very seriously on the survey. Because there is a direct correlation between economic development and housing.
If we can get the Family Promise people well represented in the survey, that will be very, very important.
Yes, I'll, I'll make sure at the next board meeting that there's an announcement that's made and they can, uh, um, uh, reach out with their contacts as well. So, um, but I wanted to start my counselor's report with an invitation. And also conclude my counselor's report, uh, with an invitation, um, other than the fact, uh, I wish everybody a Happy New Year. Um, every time I change the calendar, I immediately think of Y two K. When we were all freaking out, um, when we were gonna turn over the new millennium. And the bankers were spending the night and wondering what was gonna happen to our computer system and whatnot. And it's like, wow, we, twenty-three years ago, um, I hope you are appreciating every day. Because, uh, time really flies and, um, you just don't know when your last haircut's going to be. Uh, which is my new line, so, uh, Happy New Year to all that are here. Uh, my first invitation, of course, is to invite you to donate blood on Tuesday, January tenth. At the Presbyterian Church from one to seven, um, if you can't make that, we have two other opportunities locally this month. On Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, at Geneva General Hospital from ten to four, and Thursday, the twenty-sixth. On Poltony Street at F L C C from one to six. Um, as the liaison to the Geneva B I D, just a couple of things. Um, we're so excited that the L D C and the I D A have both agreed to, uh, help fund. Um, the, uh, twenty twenty-three beautification plan, uh, put through. Um, and proposed by our new executive director, Catherine Price. So we, I wanna thank those community partners and, um, all of us, um, in the community are gonna have a little bit of growing pains. With, um, maintaining our, uh, new beautification efforts as a result of the D R I. So I wanted to give a shout out to those two, um, municipal organizations. Um, the B I D is currently planning their Winter Arts Festival for February fourth to eleventh. Which is going to include Ontario County Restaurant Week, which is actually going to be in conjunction with the Ontario County Chamber of Commerce. So, um, I, I know we'll have a, a spread, uh, with the Finger Lakes Times. It's also on the Geneva B I D website or will be, um, we'll also be having our Film Festival that week at the Smith Opera House. Which was highly successful, and it's an inaugural year last year, and also an art walk. Um, there'll be a lantern parade once again, hold on, Ken, I still have the mic. Um, which is actually gonna terminate on Linden Street with an ice bar. So we haven't had an ice bar, um, since I think, uh, the Ramada, when the way up. When the YMCA did it several years and was just a enormous success. Um, especially if snow is in the air and the temperature is right. So, um, more to come on that, but I hope you will participate, um, in the, uh, ice bar on, uh, Linden Street. The, um, uh, the Shade Tree Committee, I wasn't able to make. I don't even know if there was a meeting last month, Ken, I know you're waving your pen at me for something else. But, um, I do have a, uh, um, donation on behalf of the efforts of the Shade, Shade Tree Committee and my volunteers. Um, a hundred and fifty dollars last month for firewood sales, and Bill Peeler will be happy to know that I am reusing an envelope. So, um, I'll, I'll give you the cash since the controller is not here, uh, more, more to come next month. Um, the H D C did not meet, um, I'll end my counselor's report with an invitation. Um. Life is stressful. Uh, whether you are an athletic enthusiast or a spectator or a participant or not. Um, being involved in a spectator, um, of athletic competitions, I find great, uh, enjoyment. Um, and especially when you have a local team that, uh. Where the community and the entire state gets hyped up about. So we have a team in Buffalo that, uh, you, you can't help but realize the marketing that they have done. And the enthusiasm of, of so many people, um, who are rooting for our home team, if you will. And many of those people perhaps don't even know how many innings there are in a football game. So I wanna introduce you to an even more local team that we should, uh, support. That, uh, uh, I just wanted, I was thinking about this last night. Um, but we currently are the home to the number one. Division three men's hockey program in the United States. There are eighty-one Division three hockey programs in this country. And Hobart College, for the seventh consecutive week, is the number one team in the country. If you don't know how many innings there are in a hockey game, I invite you to go to our ice rink at the next home game. Okay, count the number of field goals that are going to be kicked during this game. And it's Friday, January twentieth at seven P M. The real meat of the competitive season in all of men's hockey, all, when, in all divisions starts in January. And on the twentieth, it's our arch rival, it's a conference game, it's a college right down the road in Elmira. And I invite you to come and support our local hockey program, number one in the country, undefeated. The games for Hobart Hockey cost you nothing to attend, nothing. It's free admission, you don't need to do tailgating to have a good time, okay? But you can do it, and there's plenty of places to enjoy post-hockey activities in downtown Geneva, walking distance. And we have no charge for parking at our local recreation facility. You just can't beat it. So I encourage you to, uh, Geneva, New York is not an overly enthusiastic hockey community. But if you don't know what end of the bat to hold, or, or what inning we're in at the hockey game. I invite you to come to watch a Hobart Hockey game, I'm at every single one, root for the home team, it's fantastic. Doesn't cost anything, like I said, and you can stay for one inning or two or the entire amount of time. So come and learn about the sport of hockey, it's, it's called the cooler, but it's really not that. Temperature-wise, a cool place to view, okay? It's all enclosed now, and I can't wait to see you on the twentieth, so, let's go Hobart. So let's go Hobart and that's the end of my report.
Tom, I'll just ask, well, I was trying to ask you, what's the date again? Could you repeat the date of the bid winter arts festival?
February 4th to 11th.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Counselor Noon.
I don't have anything from my committees, but I did have an opportunity to attend the kickoff for the 125th celebration of Geneva as a city uh, over, uh, New Year's Day and, and I applauded Jan then, and I'll applaud her again for all her efforts on helping to get that together as well as all the committee members and those involved. Uh, look forward to seeing those events unfold during that week that she had just stated. Um, I also, uh, came with some questions for our county supervisor and regarding the housing, uh, assessments. So I'm glad Ken actually answered one about a survey. I do think it's very unfortunate that we haven't seen a press release to the level of Seneca Counties, uh, encouraging people to get out there and, um, and fill out that survey. I also kind of find it a little bit disingenuine that, uh, it's only being online option. If you look at what Seneca County is offering, uh, it's going to be at the libraries, local businesses, municipality offices, uh, county office building, uh, so there's lots of different formats of that surveys. And so I, you know, just my two cents that if you really want to get people's feedback, uh, especially those who are being impacted negatively by the housing situation, offering it online is, is a very poor choice, um, as a single option. So, um, I would like to see a, a press release on that would be great. I'd also like to kind of get some feedback from our county supervisors, which again, I came with some questions for ours, but unfortunately he wasn't able to attend. And, um, so, because I think housing is definitely, you know, based on my conversations with Laura, as well as just people in the city here on council, we've talked about now for several years, uh, what a crisis it is. So I was very happy to hear that the county was going to take that on. Uh, I'm very interested to hear their feedback. Obviously, I, I think that, uh, the feedback will be lacking in the, in the current format. So, um, it'd be great if they could change that and, and, you know, increase the availability at different areas like Seneca County. Uh, but also instead of having just individual members as ourselves out there, you know, being cheerleaders for, it'd be great to have a press release on that. Um, also, I, I definitely second, uh, Frank's, uh, parking proposals in those two areas. Another area that comes to mind for me is when you make a right onto Lyceum Street from Brook Street. There's often a car parked right there at the corner and then oftentimes the second house from the corner also has a car parked. So when you have the two cars parked there, it makes it very difficult to navigate that. It's one thing when the first car is parked there right at the corner, it's another afterwards. So if we could make some adjustments there, I, I think that'd be a great area for exploration as well. Um, I had, you know, I've had some talk with a few business owners around bid and, uh, one concern that they've questioned me on several times, uh, if you look at the Geneva bid website, it says it's responsible for snow and ice removal, salting crosswalks and sidewalks during winter. I began discussions with Adam prior to his departure about getting, uh, bid to take over, um, the snow removal downtown on the sidewalks, period. Um, I know he started conversations with Mike, uh, Michael Mills and then unfortunately, obviously, you know, Adam departed, Michael departed and, and here we are today. Um, I think it's definitely something worth exploring, you know, I've had people say that, you know, they pay these dues to bid, what do they get for it? Um, clearly that this is not a true statement that they remove snow and ice or it leaves people to believe that they're doing the removal for the businesses, which is not the case, uh, which is why I advocated for them to do that. Um, also salting the crosswalks, it was questioned to me is why isn't the city doing that? Um, and obviously if you think about plow trucks driving over the side, the, the crosswalks, they are salting them. So I think maybe that clarification from bid as to exactly what their role is, uh, in regards to snow removal, uh, and, and winter care in general and, and cleaning that up on their website, uh, but also maybe increasing communication with business owners. Um, just so maybe they have a better idea also of exactly what they, and again, I'm not questioning how bid operates, uh, but what their dues specifically go for, because a lot of people question that. So I think that's, that's worth some exploration as well. Um, and I also will second what Bill said. Amy and I talked in great deal when I met one-on-one with her during my meeting about increasing activities at the lakefront. So, you know, the access to food trucks, uh, different public events. Um, you know, I'm, I'm always a big proponent about adding pavilions and picnic tables and grills and, and giving the lake more staying power and, uh, strong advocate for a public beach there. Um, and, and just again, giving the lake, um, again, not, not high-rise buildings by any means, but giving the lake a little bit more staying power, uh, so when people come, they aren't just walking and running away, that they're walking and staying or maybe increasing their enjoyment with different options. So I'll, I'll continue to be an advocate for that and, um, definitely second, uh, Bill's conversation around the food trucks. And I know that we have talked about that several times. So to me, I think that's kind of a simple thing, I use that term loosely, uh, to maybe get across the, the finish line this year as well, uh, because I know a lot of residents have brought that up to me and I'm sure they've brought that, those kinds of activities up to you as well. So that's all I have. And like I say, I look forward to learning more about the, the housing assessment. So hopefully we can get some information from that.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank, can I just comment?
I don't know, you stole one of my comments already. So yeah, you can go ahead, Counselor Burrow.
Just, just keep your stick on the ice, Finger Lakes. Um, thank you for bringing that up about the, um, misinformation on the BID website. I will take care of that this week. Um, since the BID was founded in the mid 80s, they have never removed, uh, snow from downtown sidewalks. That's not, not their mission. They don't remove and salt crosswalks either. They only do the entrance corner, side, um, sidewalks to the crosswalks. So each corner, the snow is removed and salted by the BID and that's pretty much been happening since the inception. But, but we do not, we do not remove, uh, snow from sidewalks. That's, uh, that, yeah, I, I will get that changed, but that, that's inaccurate. Thank you for calling that to our attention.
Awesome. So Counselor Burrow stole some of my thunder because, um, I am a big Hobart Hockey fan. Go Bart. They are 13-0 right now. Um, great group of gentlemen that, that are on that team. Being number one in the country is, is a great phenomenon, especially in, in that league and that division, some really hard play. I was fortunate enough to meet a bunch of the players last year. Um, and it's interesting when they want to start taking selfies with the mayor. And it kind of made me sheepish. I'm like, okay, fellows, where's this going? But, uh, interestingly enough, New Year's Eve after the game, um, I met the, uh, the goal, the, the goal winner, Shane Shell. Um, and we were at the new hideout. And they were, they were getting ready to celebrate New Year's Eve. I left way before New Year's Eve came and I wished them well in the New Year's event. So I wish those, that team well moving forward and I hope we get to celebrate a national championship. I'm looking forward to that. Big thank you to Counselor Regan. Jan, you, you know, taking the lead on the 125th anniversary is no small task. Somebody needs to carry that torch and then get a bunch of people on the bandwagon to make it really work. So um, a huge thank you there. It's a great kickoff and I, and I anticipate not just in February, but I anticipate these events to kind of cascade throughout the year, which I, I hope it gains a lot of momentum. I celebrated the 100th birthday at the Smith Opera House as I was on council in 1998. You can do the math. Been doing this for a little while. Um, and I was fortunate enough in 1998 to be invited to Geneva, Switzerland to do a celebration of Geneva's of the world, 28 Genavas in the world. And I can honestly say, and maybe I would rose colored glasses, but we are the most beautiful Geneva in the world. And nothing against Geneva, Switzerland, the birthplace of the Geneva. It's on a lake. There's only three Genavas in the world that are on a lake. Geneva, Switzerland, Geneva, Ohio, which is on a huge lake and you can't really tell it's a lake. It looks like an ocean. And Geneva, New York. There are some Genavas that are on water, but they're more on rivers. And the smallest Geneva in the world is Geneva in South Africa, which is just a train stop. But all 28 Genavas of the world were represented in 1998 in Geneva, Switzerland. We stayed at a famous hotel Metropole that was taken over by the government to do the peace talks for one of the world wars in the, the Geneva Convention. And we actually had to give a presentation and I was on council with Dr. Marshall at that time and we went over and gave a presentation. And I look back now with technology and I wish we had recorded that and had that in the archives, in the historical archives, because we gave an excellent presentation about our beautiful city. And maybe that's why I carry the tradition of, of wanting Geneva to continue to be better and better. So thank you very much, Counselor Regan, and I look forward to this year and the 125th celebration. Um, and just a big thank you to the city manager who has closed down her house and she's working to kind of do her upgrades before she moves in. So we're looking forward to her to actually living in the city of Geneva very soon. So thank you very much. Next is a public comment and we have Mr. Andrew Spinks. We'll give you three minutes.
Thank you for squeezing me in here at the end. Sorry, we're stepping longer than I expected tonight. Um, so my name is Andrew Stink. I'm grateful that this council appointed me to serve on the police budget advisory board and I offer these comments, uh, for myself, not on behalf of any other member. Um, so I'm happy to see the restoration of James McCorkle and Robert McLean to the board. I hope that this council takes to heart the lessons learned over the last several months. Uh, when Mr. McCorkle and Mr. McLean were originally removed from the board, I was upset and I considered resigning myself. And it's not because I agree with everything they've ever said, and I don't always agree, by the way, but rather because to me it felt like that the board was being made into a political punching bag and it was disrupting our work. And one sentiment expressed at the last meeting, you know, was said that the members of the police budget advisory board are just political appointees. And I'm not here to say whether that's technically correct or not. But I can say I was disappointed by this statement because the board is simply never functioned like a political body. Uh, the discussions don't typically break down partisan lines. Discussions have centered around topics like how do we make the budget more efficient? How can we improve the functioning of the police department? In our most recent set of budget recommendations from several months ago, most were passed unanimously. Um, and at our meetings, I've never had any doubts that each member, both old and new, has held the, the best interests of the city at heart. Every single member who's ever served on the board has been thoughtful and earnest, including Mr. McCorkle and Mr. McLean. It's worth remembering that the board has no actual policymaking authority. It only makes recommendations that this council is free to reject. The board is a place of ideas and productive discussion, research and creative thinking. So for this reason, removing members after they'd already been appointed, simply for their ideological views, to me, it was contrary to the whole purpose of, of the board. I want to address, uh, the emails that were reported by the Finger Lakes Times. So I am very grateful to the chief of police for all the work he does to keep the city safe. However, I, I, I don't believe he's in a position to make demands of the mayor or any elected official about the composition of the board. You are all the elected officials. You are the only ones directly accountable to the people. The chief of police works for you, not the other way around. And recently, the police budget advisory board has begun to research topics such as officer recruitment, saving the GPD money on its contracts, and also how to address calls involving mental health crisis. And I think these topics show that the board is much more interested in finding creative solutions than is in creating some sort of adversarial relationship with law enforcement. So I hope that this council continues to support the board's work. And I thank the board for doing the right thing by restoring Mr. McCorkle and Mr. McLean. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve and for listening to me tonight. Um, while I'm up here, I do want to, um, express my support for the four-way stop at Weston Williams. I think that'd be really good. Um, and actually one place that I think is kind of strange too, uh, Williams and Pulteney because it kind of looks like a four-way stop, but it's not. So like, if you're not familiar with the area, you might see traffic kind of zooming by in Pulteney. So that's just one thing I noticed when I moved in that, uh, part of the area, but so thanks a lot.
Motion to adjourn. Counselor Noon, second by Counselor Gallinazie, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you very much.